I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Councilmember Matias Rosales.
Present.
Councilmember Luis Cabrera.
Present.
Vice Mayor Gloria Torres.
Present.
Councilmember Javier Vargas.
Present.
Councilmember Thaddeus Azaleo de la Hoya.
Present.
Mayor Neves Raydell.
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge. Councilmember Rosales, Matias, would you please lead us?
We introduce to the fire of the United States of America into the Republic where we stand, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, invocation, Pastor Abel Garcia, Church for the City.
Good evening, everybody. Let's pray. Jesus, first of all, thank you. Thank you for this day and the opportunity we have to be a blessing to others. I thank you for the city of San Luis, Arizona, and the privilege we have of living here. We ask that you help us to learn from our community and that it may be a place where all are welcome. We pray for healing for anyone that is hurting today or has lost someone significant in their lives. Come heal their hearts and minds and restore everything that's been lost. We pray for every business represented in the city. Bless them and use them to be a blessing to others. Bless every church in the city and that every church will rise up to be a light in the darkness but also a helping hand in times of need and desperation. May the church be diligent in responding, slow to talk, but quick to action to the needs of this city. Bless every person in this place that they may flourish in everything that they do. Lord, thank you for our mayor, city council, and in particular, our re-elected council member Luis Cabrera and newly-elected council members Esteban Rosales and Lizeth Servin. Protect our law enforcement officers, first responders, and all personnel and every leader at every level in our city. Give them grace, wisdom, and truth for our city. Jesus, bring hope, healing, and restoration to everyone who needs it today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Before we start, I would like to welcome every single one of you that are participating tonight. Family members from the new council members, family members from the council members that have served for so long. They're here, dignitaries. There are so many of you that it would be impossible to name each one of you. But each one of you have a special place with the mayor, the council, and here in the city of San Luis. Thank you so much for taking the time. It means a lot to me. Thank you for being here.
Item number four, presentation and recognition. Item number four A, presentation and recognition to Gloria Torres and Matias Rosales for their years of service, of public service, on behalf of the city of San Luis. City Council. Mesadella Cortez, Human Resources Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and all guests present today. On behalf of the city of San Luis, I would like to present a plaque to Councilmember Matias Rosales. Councilmember Rosales, in appreciation of your dedicated service to the citizens of San Luis, as a member of city council, you serve terms from 2012 to 2016, 2016 to 2020, and 2020 to 2024. And during those terms, you serve as vice mayor for the years of 2023, 24, I'm sorry, 2013, 2014, 15, 16, 17, 2020, and 2021. Thank you. Councilmember and vice mayor right now, Ms. Gloria Torres. In appreciation of your dedicated service to the citizens of San Luis as a member of the city council, the terms you serve were 2000 to 2004, 2011 to 2016, 2016 to 2020, and 2022, 2024. You also serve as vice mayor in the years of 2001, 2002, and 2024. Thank you.
Aren't they going to say a few words?
It was coming there.
Okay. I need patience. Sorry. Back row, can we have you scoot a little bit? A little bit more. Just get it to center of the logo. Bottom row is perfect. Big smile.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. If we have any of the department heads, managers, or staff in the city of San Luis, can you please stand up? Councilmember Rosales and Vice Mayor Torres, thank you for your years of service. On behalf of all the city staff, we're here to thank you for your years of service, for your commitment to the community, to the sacrifices you made along the way, and for your love and passion that you've shown throughout the years. On behalf of all the city staff, we thank you so much for your years of service and we wish you the best of luck. And for the new elected officials, Lizeth Servin and Esteban Rosales and Councilmember Cabrera, this is your team. So we welcome you and we're looking forward to working with you. Thank you. And now, we have several people that want to honor you. Some of them could not be here tonight, so we got two videos.
I have a little note here, which I'm going to send to the council only to wish Gloria Torres the best retirement ever. Thank Gloria for serving the community on the school board most thirty years, and retiring vice mayor of the city of San Luis. Muchas felicidades and happy retirement.
Buenas tardes. Aquí su nombre es el de Santa Tana, y quiero mandar un mensaje de agradecimiento a la dice, a la cabeza Gloria Torres, por sus dejan del servicio a la ciudad de San Luis y al sitio escolar de Gaston. Gracias por su liderazgo y su servicio a nuestra comunidad. También quiero dar las gracias al concejal Matias Rosales por su dejan del servicio a la ciudad de San Luis. Y darles la bienvenida a Lizeth Servin, a Luis Cabrera, y al señor Rosales que tiene como nuevos concejales en la ciudad de San Luis. Bienvenidos y gracias a todo su servicio.
In addition to that, we have some of our neighboring communities that want to come in and honor our outgoing council. The county, you want to start first?
Good evening, Mayor and council, and new elected officials. Congratulations. On behalf of the county and the board, we just want to say thanks to Gloria Torres and Matias Rosales for your work and support for the relationship that you guys have with the county. So, en agradecimiento muchas les quiero dar las gracias porque apoyan al condado y trabajamos juntos. So, tenemos un certificado para ustedes, si se los puedo dar.
Martha, from Congressman Grijalva's office.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Congressman Grijalva could not be here. He sends his well wishes to the incoming council and well wishes to the outgoing as well. Mr. Rosales, I'm going to have to bring your certificate back because I misspelled and I left it in the car. But he sends a special note to Vice Mayor Torres. "It is with great pleasure that I congratulate you, my friend, for the many years of excellence and community service to the city of San Luis and the Gaston District School Board. I applaud you for the countless days and nights of working together with many community leaders, scholars, and community members for the betterment of the city and the school district. You have served with great honor and integrity, and it shows tonight with the presence of all who have come to honor your service. I can only wish you the best in this next phase and I look forward to our continued collaboration as I'm sure your involvement in the community will continue. Respectfully, your friend, Raoul Grijalva."
Thank you, Martha. City of Somerton.
Good evening, Mayor and council. First of all, I want to congratulate the new elected officials. Well, congratulations, Cabrera. Also, Councilwoman, not yet Councilwoman, but congratulations, Servin and Mr. Rosales. And Matias, I'm sure it's not going to be the last time I see you, so it's been a pleasure working with you and all these various boards. So I'm sure I'm going to see you. And Vice Mayor, congratulations on your retirement and thank you for all your years of service to South County and being, collaborating with Somerton. As it says there, San Luis was incorporated in 1979, so you've been a major part of San Luis and its development. So congratulations. And we have a plaque. I didn't bring my reader, so Mr. Castillo's going to read it.
Good evening, Mayor, council. So it says Certificate of Appreciation proudly presented to Gloria Torres. On behalf of the mayor and council of the city of Somerton, we want to express our gratitude for your dedication and commitment to serving the residents of the city of San Luis for over seventeen years. Your leadership and passion have greatly contributed to improving the community and have inspired future generations to engage in public service. Please know that your hard work and sacrifices are deeply appreciated and recognized.
Thank you. And we also have one more person that came in from Phoenix to try to say a few words. Mr. Ramírez.
Councilwoman, I should start off. Mayor, members of council, good evening. My name is Luis Ramírez. President Ramírez Advisors. Truly came over just to thank both of you and the members of council for everything you have done. You are leaving definitely your fingerprints all over the city. Look forward to working with our re-elected and our new members of council. There's a lot of work to be done. We've had some tremendous success for this community. People see the construction that's going on and that's about to start also in Cesar Chavez Boulevard. There's a lot of work to be done still. So I, as a person with admiration and respect for both of you, I truly hope and join everyone saying this is, I hope, not the last we're going to see of you. There's still a lot more work to be done. So with that, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to say hello and thank you very much for your service. Look forward to working with our new members. Thank you.
I want to give you an opportunity to say a few words. Whichever wants to start first.
I write something because I forgot everything except eating. Okay. Primero quiero darle gracias a Dios por haberme permitido servir a mi comunidad en estos últimos veinticuatro años y dejarme terminar este ciclo de mi vida con dignidad. También darle gracias al concilio que a través de los años me han apoyado y me han tenido paciencia, porque sí me han tenido paciencia. Mil gracias a todos los departamentos, a los empleados que fueron parte de mi crecimiento en esta larga jornada. Es un placer enorme haber sido parte de este gran equipo que busca el bienestar de nuestra ciudad. Es un placer y un deber representar a los residentes de San Luis porque por ellos fui elegida para servir a mi pueblo. Gracias a todos de todo corazón por el apoyo. Por todos estos años se les va a extrañar a todos y cada uno de ustedes. Y espero que el nuevo concilio que entre entre con ese mismo compromiso de servir y con esa misma visión de servir para beneficio de San Luis. Les voy a decir un poquito en inglés, que es muy fuerte. First of all, I want to thank God for allowing me to serve my community. All these twenty-four years allow me to end this term of my life with dignity. I also like to thank the council for its support and patience over the years. A big thank to all the department's employees who contribute to my growth in this long journey. It's a great pleasure having part of this great team that seeks to be well to our city. It's a pleasure and a duty to represent the residents of San Luis who they elect to serve my community. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for all your support all these years. I will miss every single one of you and I hope this new council comes with the same commitment to serve the community and have a vision that benefit San Luis. Gracias a todos de todo corazón.
I should have wrote something too. I didn't think it was going to be that hard to speak. So I should have talked to you first. First of all, I want to thank my wife. My family. Throughout the twelve years of servicing our community, they've been with me the whole time. To the residents for voting and allowing me to serve for the past three terms. Thank you. To staff, it hasn't been an easy road, but we've done a lot of great changes for our community. Someone asked me the other day, what was the biggest project that I feel that we as council did together? And they were surprised with my answer. They thought I was going to say the port of entry. But the biggest project that stays with me was when we did Jordunio. When we paved our parking lot and made it more accessible to the community for our youth, improved our recreational activities because the community is what makes our city. The Port of Entry was a project that we as council worked for the past twelve years. It is being built, as everybody could tell. Cesar Chavez expansion. We've done a lot of great work and like Mr. Ramírez mentioned, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. And I leave the council here with that task to please to continue to work, work for our community. I'm proud. My son is coming up. He's going to be taking my place. Like I said, I'm an old guy now. He was twelve years old when I first got elected. I never asked him to follow my footsteps. I wanted him to find himself and he's done that and I'm proud of him. So I hope staff, the council, and the community accept him and guide him through the learning process. And to everybody, thank you. To my father, he's back there somewhere. Thank you for making the drive down here. He was here twelve years ago when I got sworn in and he's here for the last day too. To all my friends and family and volunteers that have been here. And Mayor, I ask you as well to please work with the council and let's continue to work for our community. So thank you to everybody and God bless.
Danny, if we could, keep him here so we can say a few words.
It's up to the mayor, yes.
I think we all want to say a few words.
I will start. Personally, I know Gloria from the past thirty-some years that she took me under her wing with Mr. Reyes a long, long time ago. I was, I had the honor and the pleasure of building her first house. We come a long ways. Gloria, I saw your kids grow right in front of me. You know how I feel about your family. Through ups and downs, and sometimes we don't see eye to eye, but my respect had always been for you and your family. You had done a great job raising your kids and through that you can see the results. You have served this community with honor and integrity. There's no question about it. It's really hard to No tienes que apurarte. Todos nosotros aquí. Yo personalmente me encargo de que tu hijo esté en buenas manos. No necesita mucha ayuda porque sus padres han hecho muy buen trabajo con él. He doesn't need a lot of help from us, you know. He has a great set of parents. He already comes from a great foundation. All of us are going to work with you. Esteban, you need anything, I'm within a phone call away, I'm always available. All of us are here to work with you. I think you're the youngest one, but you have a big heart and you have a great future. I'm so honored for you to have taken the time and have this desire to serve your community. It's hard work, and don't expect anybody to say thank you. But as long as you do it, because it's the right thing to do and your heart tells you to do it, keep doing it. We need people like you. Ojalá que les sirva de inspiración a todos estos jóvenes para que se involucren. Este es el principio de empezar a tener un concilio joven. No que estemos tan de atiro, ¿no? Pero hay que pensar en el futuro. Muchas gracias a... ¿Qué les puedo decir, Matías y Gloria? Este no es el final de su carrera de servir a su comunidad. Lo traen en el corazón, van a seguir sirviendo, yo estoy segura. Muchas gracias.
What can I say? Maria, Matías, I just wanna say, thank you for all this time of service. I feel honored to have the opportunity to work with you guys. You show me a lot. I'm very thankful, because when I got elected, you guys embraced me and you taught me a lot. I can only say thank you for all these years of the service. The community and all the Council are very thankful with you. I wish you the best of luck, and I'm nervous I say Maria, not Gloria. I was thinking that Maria was gonna talk first, so. Thank you, and we'll see you around. And Esteban, and Liseth, and Luis. Luis, welcome back. And Esteban, and Liseth, welcome to the Council. Thank you.
Maria wants to be last, I guess, so I'll go next. Matías, thank you for sharing your knowledge, for all your hard work that you've done the past twelve years, for your commitment to the community. On behalf of the Council members, it doesn't go unnoticed, all the extra hours that you put, it's not just coming up to these Council meetings and being here and making the hard decisions that we make. You serve on multiple boards, you do a lot of traveling, you're away from your family, or you were away from your family for many days throughout the year, and I'm pretty sure you missed very important events by serving the community. So I thank you for that, and I'm pretty sure that Esteban will follow on to your footsteps as well, as he's raising his family and our community. So I truly wanna say thank you, because since I became elected, you shared your knowledge, your experience, you taught me many different things. You were always a phone call away if I had any questions, so don't think that because you're not gonna be in Council, I'm not gonna pick your brain at times, because you truly were an ally with all knowledge and information that you have and possess, so I'm definitely gonna miss that from you and being, traveling together at times, so I wish you the best. I know this is not your last term in serving in our community. I hope to see your name on the ballot again soon. And for Esteban, Liseth, welcome. I'm excited to have you guys join our Council. I'm gonna switch to Spanish, Gloria. ¿Qué le puedo decir Gloria? Muchas gracias. Desde que inicié, pues desde que inicié en el 2014 con el deseo de servir a la comunidad como el concilio, pues me arropó, me cobijo como, pues como uno de sus otros hijos. Me enseñó, me guió, su humildad, siempre me, pues siento que me la paso, del por qué estamos aquí, de servir. Creo que no he conocido a ningún servidor público como Gloria, de que en realidad su humildad y su sencillez para servir a nuestra comunidad siempre ha sido desde el día uno, sin importar qué posición tuvieras, si era Council Member, si era ViceAlcalde, era la misma persona siempre, sencilla, que podía o no ir y preguntarle y hablar con ella. Voy a extrañar mucho sus enseñanzas. De todo corazón, le deseo que disfrute este retiro. Yo sé que a veces es estresante estar tomando decisiones difíciles para nuestra comunidad, pero sé que va a estar aquí involucrada, que la vamos a seguir mirando, y de todo corazón estoy muy agradecido con ustedes por todo su apoyo que nos ha dado cada vez que se ha necesitado. Muchísimas gracias Gloria, y que disfrute su retiro.
Gloria, Matías, I'm very, very grateful. Gloria, I met you when I was sixteen, when I first started working for the city, and ever since we have been working together, so I'm only grateful for everything. You helped me during my first campaign back in 2008, so I will never forget that. Ups and downs, and all I can say is that I'm grateful for your service and what you have dedicated to the residents of the City of San Luis, Arizona. So, thank you. Matías, again, like everyone says, this is not a goodbye, this is a see you later. Thank you for all those travels and overnighters and going back and forth to Phoenix, for slapping me, for kicking me to be quiet, because I needed to shut up or say something I shouldn't, but it was appreciated. You, both of you are gonna truly be missed by us here, but I know you'll be around, so I'm only grateful, and I agree that we will see you, we will see you around. And thanks to your family, because I know that you miss anniversaries and birthdays, but it was well invested for the greater good of the community, so thank you both, appreciate it.
Thank you Gloria and Matías for your many years of service, your dedication. Gloria, you showed us how to serve our community. We started campaigning together in 2012, Matías and you and I. It was an amazing experience. You truly did teach us how to serve. You know, not only did you serve your community, but you also served the educational system as a board member for many, many years. I'm so very grateful. I got close to your children, and thank you Gloria. And as for my buddy, I wanna thank you so much. You have been so, such a powerful impact on this community. I've seen you work when we've traveled to Washington, to Arizona, the capital, and it's an honor to serve by your side, your family, your wife. They are like my nieces and nephews. A beautiful family, beautiful family. I remember when they said, you know, all the years you've served as Vice Mayor, and they said, okay, Maria, it's your turn. I was like, oh my gosh, how am I gonna fill them big shoes? He just served with excellence, and I just wanna thank you, Matías, and we're family. So thank you, and I love you both.
Item number four B. Oath and Swearing In Ceremonies. Oath and Swearing In of Office for Re-Elected Council Member Luis Cabrera to be officiated by the Honorable Danay T. Figueroa, San Luis Municipal Court Magistrate.
Good evening, maybe I'll start this way. Good evening, Mayor, Council Members of the public. I'm Judge Figueroa. I've been given the honor of swearing in our newly elected and re-elected Council Members. Pursuant to ARS 38-231, Council Members are required to take the loyalty oath. Not every profession requires an oath, and not everyone lives their life or professional career by an oath. This time, a year ago, I took this exact same oath. It is my belief that the oath is required, because as public servants, you have been given authority to make decisions for the betterment of a community. This oath reminds us that the only proper use of that authority is within the confines of the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona. As a Council Member, you may face many challenges. The types of challenges may change over time. However, your responsibility per the oath never changes. The oath is a declaration by an individual of allegiance, and I am sure that each of you will take your oath seriously to ensure the betterment of this great city. With that being said, I will go ahead and begin swearing in the re-elected Luis Cabrera. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Esteban C. Rosales...
I, Esteban C. Rosales...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
And the laws...
And the laws...
Of the State of Arizona...
Of the State of Arizona...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same...
And defend them...
And defend them...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of the Office of Council Member...
Of the Office of Council Member...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Thank you, congratulations.
What do I have to say?
Lizeth Servín... Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lizeth Servín...
I, Lizeth Servín...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
And laws...
And laws...
Of the State of Arizona...
Of the State of Arizona...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same...
And defend them...
And defend them...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of the Office of Council Member...
The Office of Council Member...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emma.
In a little bit, yeah. So, please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Luis E. Cabrera...
I, Luis E. Cabrera...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them...
And defend them.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmember.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
I'm gonna keep it short because Esteban and Liseth want to be up here as well. So, I just want to say thank you to the community for your support on this reelection. It is an honor to serve the city of San Luis. I've been serving since 2020, and I look forward to the next four years of service to our community, to our dedicated staff. I thank you for the hard work these past four years. I look forward to the next four years that we show more progress and we continue the work that has been done in the past. To my family, to my wife, my stepson, my daughter who's at home. I thank you guys because, without your support, this wouldn't be possible. I know that I'm away from home quite some time and that my wife has to hold on the fort with the kids. So, I truly appreciate everything that you do. It does not go unnoticed. I know sometimes you're tired, and I have other commitments, but trust me, it's for the better good of our family, for all the families of San Luis, and all of the residents. So, I'm gonna stop talking because if I continue, I will cry. But thank you to my wife and my family and everyone for your support. Thank you all for being here.
Esteban C. Rosales. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Esteban C. Rosales...
I, Esteban C. Rosales.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
And laws...
And laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
And that I will bear true faith...
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them...
And defend them.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmember.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. Lizeth Servin. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lizeth Servin...
I, Lizeth Servin.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States...
The United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
And laws...
And laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them...
And defend them.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember.
The office of councilmember.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We still have a few items, some business items to attend, but those family members and entities that came in to honor the outgoing council and the new elected officials, if they'd like to wait here or wait in the multipurpose room for the reception, you're welcome to do so.
Yes, please, we invite you to go to the reception before the food is cold. I'm gonna be very fast, okay? I promise you. We'll go and meet you in 20 minutes. But if you want to stay, you're welcome.
Item number five, presentation. Item number five A, Presentation and Recognition of the 2024 Fourth Quarter Awardees by the Employee Recognition and Awards Program ERAP for their outstanding work with the city of San Luis. Enrique Lopez, ERAP, share.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. These outstanding individuals have demonstrated exceptional dedication, innovation, and commitment to our agency, and it's our honor to celebrate their achievements. These employees have gone above and beyond in their respective roles embodying the values and mission of the city of San Luis. This recognition is a testament to their excellence and the positive difference they make every single day. Our first award is the Achievement Award. This award is provided to recognize and celebrate employees' exceptional performance over a period of time due to the completion of a major project or program. The recipient of this award is Angelica Roldan, Parks and Recreation Director. Our next award is the Employee of the Quarter Award. This award recognizes and rewards employees outstanding qualities and contributions towards department and city goals and mission. These individuals routinely contribute above and beyond the status quo while consistently exhibiting a positive, supportive, and collaborative working relationship with peers and supervisors. This year's winner is Sorchy Lopez, Public Works. The next award is the Award of Excellence. This award is provided to employees who go above and beyond their call of duty, portray exemplary effectiveness, provide a bright idea, and show excellent quality of work. This year's recipient is Salvador Estrada from the Fire Department. The next award is the Safety Award. This award recognizes the contributions that employees or work units make to the health and safety practices in the workplace. The winner is the San Luis Senior Center. They will receive their award shortly. The next award is the Customer Service Award. This award is provided to celebrate those who support customers, drive satisfaction, and maintain great business, demonstrate their ability to provide a smile and service in challenging customer service situations. This award goes to Raimundo Aguiano from the Public Works Department. This next award is the Rookie of the Year Award. This individual routinely contributes above and beyond the status quo by consistently exhibiting a positive, supportive, and collaborative working relationship with peers and supervisors. The recipient is Adriana Garcia from the Human Resources Department. And our final award is the Employee of the Year. This award recognizes and rewards the outstanding qualities and contributions of employees towards departmental and city goals and mission. This award is used to distinguish employees from their counterparts and acknowledge them for their disposition, attitude, and performance. This year's winner is Lieutenant Damian Miller from the San Luis Police Department. We present to you your fourth quarter winners. Thank you.
Item number six, Consent Agenda. All matters are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any opposed, please signify by saying aye. None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number seven, Discussion and Possible Action Items. Item number seven A, Discussion and Possible Action on any and all matters regarding the designation of a Vice Mayor, City Council.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I just wanted to give you some rules of procedure for this particular item. Although we have adopted the Roberts Rules, if there's an exception in the code, we can use the code. So, under Roberts Rules, you would nominate a Vice Mayor, and there would be a whole messy procedure. But thankfully, under our code, you just would motion to designate name of councilmember. Then there would be a second, as usual. Or if not, it would die, that particular motion. If it passed, if it's seconded, then you just vote as normal. So, the motion would just be, I designate councilmember.
So, this moment is open. Anybody wants to nominate himself or herself or want to nominate somebody else? This is your time.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Councilmember Thadeo de la Hoya.
There's a nomination for the Vice Mayor position on Mr. Thadeo de la Hoya. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mayor, you need a second?
Oh, we need a second. I'm in a hurry. I'm hungry. Do we have a second? Then I'll be the second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, let's do roll call, please.
Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Esteban Rosales.
Aye.
Councilmember Luis Cabrera.
Nay.
Councilmember Lizeth Servin.
Aye.
Councilmember Javier Vargas.
Nay.
Councilmember Thadeo de la Hoya.
Aye.
Mayor Nieves Raydel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item number seven B, Discussion and Possible Action on any and all matters regarding Resolution Number 2350, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the city of San Luis, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into a development agreement between the city of San Luis, Arizona, Von Verde Partners LLC, Somerton School District Number 11 and Yuma Union High School District Number 70 for the development of property located between Avenue E and Avenue D and between County 24th Street and County 24th and a half Street. Jose Guzman, Director of Development Services.
Uh, we're, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. This is a request by Vega and Vega Engineering for the development agreement for Quidia Park Development, which consists of 320 acres. This item was presented to council last week during the work session. The applicant has agreed to dedicate all the necessary right-of-way within 90 days of the agreement. And the agreement establishes the base improvements as required by the regulations, similar to other development agreements that the city has done. Staff recommends approval of this development agreement with the motion is conditioned on the approval of all the parties involved in the agreement. This includes the Somerton and the San Luis High School Districts. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here as well.
I gotta comment. We have a great work session. It was very well informed. I truly believe that all parties come to the table. And I, for one, I know that their legal counsel and the city legal counsel and all of you, including Ms. Torres, worked diligently on this item, and I'm very satisfied on the way things turned out. And if there's no questions, comments? Is there comments, questions on this item?
Mayor, I would like to comment.
Yes.
I just want to make a suggestion so that this doesn't happen again as far as the illegal lot splits. You know, maybe send a friendly reminder to developers that how the city of San Luis operates is not the same as the county. So, if there's something that we can do to remind them in a manner to prevent this.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I just want to thank staff and the applicant for working with us on getting this done. And with that, I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2350, conditioned upon approval of all parties to the development agreement.
I second the mo... Oh, okay. We second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. And I want to personally say thank you very much for the applicant, for being patient with us. Let's work together. Let's keep making San Luis being the fastest-growing city in the state of Arizona. Thank you so much for being part of our community and our growth. Thank you. Thank you, VNA.
Item number seven C, Discussion and Possible Action on any and all matters regarding Resolution Number 2337, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the city of San Luis, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the state of Arizona and the city of San Luis, authorizing the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, to administer the construction of the Cesar Chavez Boulevard Roadway Improvements Project. Jenny Torres, Acting City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Just a little history for our new elected councilmembers. We've been working with the Cesar Chavez Boulevard for the past 10 years. We were able to get state and federal funding to do the design. The design is going to be completed here in December. We also received $33 million from the state legislature. We received $25 million from a federal grant. And we also put in $3.2 million out of our America Rescue Act plan. That would be used for the construction. What ADOT has been helping us with is administering the project throughout the process. What this IGA does, it allows them to construct and be the... do the construction administration for the project. It also allows the ARPA funding to be committed as we need to commit it by December. And it allows the other funding also to be used. I think we've been waiting for this project for a long period of time. We're gonna probably start construction in April of next year, and the project's gonna take about two years to construct. With this IGA, we did an IGA for the design. We also did an IGA for the right-of-way. So, that's why it specifies several IGAs throughout the past few years. I'd be happy to address any questions you might have.
Questions, concerns? And if not, I want to take a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2337 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Good job. On item 7D, I do have a conflict. Please, Vice Mayor, take over.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 7D, Public hearing followed by discussion and possible action on any and all matters regarding resoning case number 2024-0776 for Los Mesquitas Unit 5, An ordinance number 458, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the city of San Luis, Arizona, amending the official zoning map of the city of San Luis by changing the zoning classification of 11.83 acres from medium-density residential R2 to medium-density residential R16, located at the northeast corner of 24th Avenue and 18th Street, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability. Staff or applicant presentation, please.
Vice Mayor, councilmembers. This is a request from Diaz Engineering to rezone 11.83 acres from R2 to R16. The property was already sold as R16 and was rezoned to R2 for the construction of a townhome subdivision. But now, the plan is to do a single-family subdivision of 51 lots to be known as Mesquitas Unit 5. We sent out all the notices and letters, and there were no objections or comments. The plan zoning commission recommended approval, and staff recommends approval with the condition that the applicant submits the full application of the preliminary plat in compliance with the city regulations and that they must comply with the approved development agreement.
I'm gonna open the public hearing at 7:01 PM. Does anyone from the public have any comment regarding this item? The applicant? Councilmembers, do any of you have any comments regarding this item? Hearing none. I'm closing the public hearing at 7:02. And now, I'm gonna undertake a motion. I move to approve the reading ordinance number 458 by title only.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 If anyone opposes, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Ordinance number 458, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the city of San Luis, Arizona, amending the official zoning map of the city of San Luis by changing the zoning classification of 11.83 acres from medium-high-density residential R-2 to medium-density residential R1-6, located at the northeast corner of 24th Avenue and 18th Street, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve and adopt ordinance number 458.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 If anyone opposes, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we need to... I need a motion to adjourn to City Council and convene as order of adjustment.
So move.
Move by Councilmember Cruz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rosales. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 If anyone opposes, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We are convening as order of adjustment at 7:03 PM. And it is a public hearing followed by discussion and possible action on any and all matters regarding variance case number 2024. regarding variance case number 2024. My apologies. No, it is that one, right? Yes.
You're right.
Variance, uh, variance case number 2024-0876. Esparsa Parking Lot, a request from Samuel Garcia Jr., PE, on behalf of Guillermo Esparsa, the owner, for variance from the City of San Luis. Zoning ordinance sections 17.75.040, table number 15, to reduce our required parking spaces from 33 to 22 on properties located at 535 and 541 North Main Street in San Luis, Arizona. Staff and/or applicant presentation.
Vice Mayor, council members. This is a request to rezone the parking requirements for 33 to 22. As mentioned on the report, based on the information provided, staff did a, um, analysis of the request and it doesn't meet the, the required criteria for a variance. The lot, it's, it's larger than the, the minimum required for a, uh, commercial, um, lot. Although these buildings were, were built a long time ago, the regulations back then required for parking, but they were not, uh, constructed. And the owner can comply with the current regulations by making an agreement for shared parking with adjacent, uh, properties that have excess, um, parking spaces. And whether the variance is approved or not, the owner can continue with the current use of retail. However, granting the variance will set a precedent for future businesses parking in the area. The request from the applicant is attached to the report and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm gonna open the public hearing at 7:05 PM. Does anyone from the public or the applicant wishes to speak on this item? Please, uh, if you can come to the podium and state your name and address.
Hello, good, good evening, uh, council members. My name's Samer Garcia. I'm the applicant, um, uh, for the client here, for the owner. You said address. So my address is 3437 East Emily Street here in San Luis, Arizona. So, um, I recognize the, uh, conclusion of the staff here and the recommendations to, um, deny, I guess, the application, the variance. As he stated, the property and as shown earlier, was shown that the, uh, the, the location is downtown San Luis, right? So predates really the incorporation of San Luis. The building is the same building as it, as it was before. In this case, what, what the client wants to do is improve the roads that, or the parking, that's really just a dirt road right now. And pave it, right? So make it into a parking lot. The options that were provided by staff of what to do was to demo part of the building to reduce the building size instead of, uh, allowing, I guess, the variance to reduce the, the parking lot. Um, as, as the engineer that was designing the, the parking lot, I tried different ways to reduce the basin required for drainage to get more parking lots in there, but just the, the shape and size of the parking lot didn't allow to really add more parking lots in there. So the other option that was provided by staff was to, um, join, uh, with an adjacent landowner, uh, to see if we could get more parking lot, but the adjacent landowners will encounter the same issues, right? Again, dated old buildings that, in order to put the necessary parking lots to its current code that predates the buildings, um, it, the, it's just not enough space. So I guess the offset of denying this would be to keep the, the dirt, empty lots that we have on the, I, I wish the, the civic could be shown, but that are shown, that, that have been there, right? So I'm a resident for San Luis all my life and, uh, I've seen those dirt parking lots there forever. You can see it's the, the siam top left. There's, we even joined, have a, an agreement with the adjacent landowner to be able to do this, this layout that's shown on the right, to maximize the space and maximize the parking lot. And even in doing so, uh, we just can't meet the, the required parking lot. I guess, any questions?
I have a couple of questions for staff. Um, what's the current use of the existing building?
The current use?
Yes.
Is retail.
Retail?
Yeah.
So there's two stores right now?
Yeah.
So the variance will be granted just to, if, or it's denied based on, if they're making improvements to the parking lot, why it's being recommended for denial?
Uh, because it doesn't meet the, the number of parking required, required for that use.
The stores, correct? The, I mean, the...
Yeah, so the building, the, the, the parking requirement is one parking space per 300 square feet.
Correct.
So based on the, on the square footage of the buildings, it requires 33 parking spaces and they will be providing 22.
So if we deny it, we just keep a dirt parking lot?
Correct. That the use stays as it is, yeah. They have the option to, uh, to get in agreement with other property owners, not the, not just the adjacent one, but, uh, owners on the area to, to do an agreement to provide enough parking spaces.
So, but again, so, but it was, okay, so we denied it stays as, is rather than having a paved parking lot? That's where I'm at.
Yeah. So staff recommendation based on the, on the current regulations, so basically that's, that will happen. They, they will continue to, to, uh, use the, the property as is right now.
So if, can anyone follow me or... Yeah, but, so you're, you're requesting that we deny this variance because it doesn't meet the code for the city, correct?
Correct, yeah.
But we have the authority to approve it. But your recommendation is based on the code?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so... So the reason why public or Development Services now, not planning and zoning Development Services is requesting a denial, seems to me that because they need 33 parking spaces, but they can only offer 22 due to the regulations. It doesn't meet the code, but we can approve it, correct?
Yeah, council has the authority to approve it.
I would, I would, I mean, if they're gonna approve it, I don't see the, the reason, um... I don't see the reason to deny it. However, if we were to approve it, I would condition it that no business is gonna be conducted out of an improved parking lot, that it'll be just used for, you know, for the stores or retail, not, not for... I don't know.
I got a question. Is there gonna be a new business? Is it just gonna be retail?
It's gonna be retail.
It's gonna be retail. Am I correct, but I believe Project PEP, that building that they did, they have the same problem with the parking?
Correct, yeah.
See, this is a problem in Main Street. All those buildings do have problems.
It's just like the one that we approved for the, for that daycare that didn't have the proper parking and, and it was still approved by council because, remember that little lot that they bought for daycare? And it didn't have, so based on the, on the small retention basins that we see, do the retention basins comply with the code for the 22 parking spaces?
Uh, it will, it will be required to comply, yeah.
So, so what they have, what we are seeing on the, on the picture, the retention basins are, are the ones that are required by the city for those 22 parking spaces?
So we, we haven't done an analysis on the, on the actual retention. So we start with the variance of the parking and then if the variance is approved, they submit the full plans for...
Are, are we... Ms. Torres, are we working in a, haven't we acquired some land over there so we can have a, a one single space that all those waters will travel there?
Mayor, we did acquire federal land, um, but it's more on the north side. Just be, just, uh, south of Cesar Chavez Boulevard. You know, some empty lot, we would have to make some significant improvements to put it in parking lot. I think the situation with staff is that, you know, we are going by the code. And if you do approve, you know, this request, then you're gonna have to approve the next one and the next one and the next one.
But, Mayor, so are, are they adding more building? Are they adding more retail space?
Uh, no, they just improve it.
So I, I, I mean, right now it's just sitting there as an empty dirt lot. We've been, well, at least I've been talking to Jenny about trying to get the downtown to be looking better, so... I don't see why there would be a problem with approving 22 parking spaces. Right now, there's nothing. Uh, there's dirt. So I think it's better to...
How many empty stores do we have in Main Street? They're gonna come later on, like Ms. Torres says. Once we open this, everybody, we're gonna have to say yes to every single one of them and I can assure you, later on, we're gonna pay the consequences because we know that there's no parking. There's no parking and, and, uh, and that's one of the reasons those stores are sitting there empty. Because they have this problem. So it's something that we better take very seriously. If we wanna deal with this problem later on, or the people that come after us, they're gonna be dealing with this. It's serious, okay? I, I don't think that our forefathers, when they did Main Street, ever stop and think that San Luis was, was going to grow the way it did. So there was no codes, you know? Let's park here and there and everywhere and that's the problem with all those buildings. Every single building has a parking problem. Am I correct?
Yeah, most of them.
Mayor, I would like to make a comment.
Sure.
I agree. That's one of the biggest complaints on Main Street. And we opened the door to this one, approved this variance. Everybody else is gonna wanna a variance on, on, on this. So, um, I, I will follow, uh, staff's recommendation because I know this is gonna be a big issue and the complaints will continue and continue.
Again, and help me understand, staff, legal. If they're, if all they're doing is paving it, what's the problem with just paving it?
You gotta follow what you...
What the code says, but it's in a, in a, it's in a mixed-use area. I mean, don't we wanna be business-friendly? That's, that's the part that I'm not connecting. I think that if, if we approve it, I mean, it's on a case-by-case. We can treat them all the same because they're not all the same, that in a mixed-use area, in my opinion. Again, I'm not the expert. Again, correct me, someone, correct me. But I don't see why paving it according to engineering standards would be an issue. And as long as we condition it that no business is gonna be done out of that parking lot, meaning, you know, they're not gonna be, you said for paid parking or a carreta. You know, I lost my word. It just, I don't know, maybe...
Hot dog stand, taco stand, any of that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
I agree. I mean, right now it's sitting on an empty dirty lot that people go and park. It's already a parking lot that we just want to allow them to pave.
Jose, were, was the applicant given the opportunity to do what we did with PEP? That they had to figure out a way, a solution to meet the parking requirements by partnering with other property owners or did we provide them those options?
Yeah, and they actually, um, have an agreement. There are two properties. So both properties came together to, to do this plan. But they can, uh, do an agreement with other adjacent properties in the area.
How many parking spaces do they still need?
Uh, 11.
And, and if you see it, the picture, there's, there's in reality, you have what was, what used to be La Casa de Cambio at the corner and they don't even have it paved. I don't even think they, they have enough land to pave per, per code. So if, I don't know if there's any other questions. I'm ready to make a motion.
I don't know. I think our job is to support, uh, support staff when they put so much work into it. And sometimes we can, yes, you're absolutely right, that little daycare center that they, those people bought their lot and they didn't do their homework, they're not gonna build it. Because when they pin it up, it didn't work out. Although we did, it was, but it was, uh, one parking lot or two parking spaces. This is 11. I don't know. I'm afraid of what comes next, okay? Because I know we're dealing with the other entity, PEP, that they might have to take the building in the back down so they can have the proper spaces. Am I correct?
Yeah, they, they did an agreement with, uh...
So that building is gonna be gone? Have, have they considered doing this, this building, you know, smaller? Do some renovations so they can meet the, so they can meet the requirements? It's another option.
Yeah, that's another option to reduce the...
Yeah, I, 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 I think that, that one will work too.
Sorry, coming back. So to be honest, I'm, I'm not, I'm not the owner, right? The owner's actually back here. And we just got this, um, proposals or recommendations to reduce the building or, uh, partner up with someone else, which we've done here. As far as the design goes, that's maximizing the space, right? So I could say that. I don't know whether the owner would wish to reduce its current building. I, I would venture to say no. He would just leave it alone and follow status quo and leave it as a dirt area. As far as what this replicates or the, uh, uh, ramification of approving this or not, I would say that not, not just by accepting this, it would follow suit for everybody else. But have them show that they try to maximize the space, right? That they're not just trying to reduce the amount of space just to reduce the amount of parking space required. Uh, there's other things you guys can approve and deny. And the reason why staff denied it was because it's in the current code to deny it, right? And it's in your guys' hands to approve it.
Mayor, I have a question for, for the owners. Or I don't know if you can answer on behalf of the owners, but does that, I, I see that the, what used to be La Casa de Cambio and, and those other businesses, they do have cars that are parked on their dirt parking lots? But I don't really see many cars parked in the aerial picture. So if this parking lot is approved, does your store have, well, my first question is, does that dirt lot, uh, do, do people park in that dirt lot, uh, as it is right now, to go to your stores?
Que le hablen español mejor?
Que le...
Que le hablen español mejor.
Sí, mi pregunta es, bueno, la primera pregunta es, la gente que ahorita va a sus tiendas, no sé cuál sea usted el propietario de la tienda, pero se estacionan regularmente en ese estacionamiento de tierra?
Estación, no, ahorita no pueden estacionarse, pero este... Ahorita, ahorita no se pueden estacionar porque quedó, este, un montón de tierra ahí y la tierra floja, pero normalmente se estacionan. Ambas, ambos negocios, como es Hueta y Nuevo Mundo, reciben clientes ahí en el estacionamiento.
Y tienen entrada a sus tiendas por, por la parte trasera?
Por la parte delantera tenemos entrada, sí.
Sí.
Y también por la parte trasera.
Okay.
¿Alguna otra pregunta para el señor? Oh, yo sí. Si consideraría, uh... Considerar, como le dice su, su ingeniero, su arquitecto, este joven, reducir su, su local para que pueda cumplir con todas las reglas. Lo consideraría?
Sí.
Ahí está la solución.
Las opciones será reducir su tienda, o sea, demoler parte de la tienda para reducir sus...
O demoler.
Demoler. Parte de su tienda para, para tener los...
Hacerla más chica, no moverla.
Sí, no, perdón, mal entendí, pero no demoleríamos.
Ah, okay. Okay, bueno. Otra, nadie más? Okay. Gracias, gracias. Okay, and then, uh, please continue. You had that item.
Okay. Does any, does anyone from the council has any questions? If not, I'm gonna entertain a motion. Oh, I need to, I'm closing the public hearing. I'll have someone from the public that wants to speak. If you please come to the microphones, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm James Allen Jr. I live at 1549 East Babble Lane here in San Luis, Arizona.
Hi, I'm James Allen Junior. I live at fifteen forty-nine East Babbitt Lane here in San Luis, Arizona. Okay, after listening to what was in reference to a code, now, if I'm... Get me right or get me wrong. If I'm wrong, stop me. Codes, if they're safety codes, they cannot be bent. Am I correct? They can't be changed because safety is paramount. If it is a code of spatial area and it's a business, the council does have leeway to prove it, but also it might be a teachable moment for the city to relook at the code and adjust it so it carries over to any other cases that come up similar to this. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a question. When was the last time this code was revised?
So the zoning was adopted in twenty twelve, but we have constantly done amendments as needed. Yeah, it's a constant amendment based on the needs or changes of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serbin. Anyone else? Hearing none. I'm gonna entertain a motion.
I move to deny variance code number twenty twenty-four zero eight seven six because the application does not meet the criteria for the variance.
There's a motion by Councilmember Cruz, second by Councilmember Vargas. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now city council as of seven twenty-six P M. Item number ten, summary of current events. Events by mayor, councilmembers, and/or city manager pursuant to A R S, section thirty-eight, four thirty-one, oh two K. Does anyone have any... Anything to say?
Mayor, I do. We have the San Luis High School F C C L A Culinary Arts that had come in and wanted to speak to the council.
Hi, good afternoon. This is mayor and city council. My name is Vanessa Valverde, and I am the president of the Culinary Arts here at San Luis High School, and I am here part to advocate for F C C L A. F C C L A stands for Family Career Community Leaders of America, which helps us be more leaderships and do more community service than any other C T S O on our campus. And we want to ask you to help us fund some of our projects that we are working on, such as making catering events for the city. And we want... Because our class is one of the most demanding ones. I'm not gonna lie. It's very hard. But it's very fruitful for us because as our city is growing, we are getting more restaurants such as The Wendy's that is coming soon to the city of San Luis. And we want to prepare our students for the future. And we... And our class currently has a waiting list, and we want to see if you guys may help fund our future projects such as maybe expanding our kitchen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from council?
I'd just like to make a comment to... Well, several departments. Employee recognition dinner, that was amazing. Thank you, Human Resources, for that. Both the tree lighting ceremony and the Holiday of Lights Parade were such a success. It was very nice to see all the people and the festivities and getting ready for the holidays and the upcoming weeks. So thank you for getting that for our community and putting that together.
I would like to announce that beginning of January twenty twenty-five, in our calendar, we have two meetings a month. It's the first and last Wednesday of every month. With the second and fourth, yeah. Okay, but sometimes we change them when they're special occasions like Christmas. But we're gonna have something new here at the city of San Luis. Me, his, and mayor, and I will invite the rest of the council, we're gonna dedicate half a day every one of those Wednesdays, and it's going to be at the city portal to come and talk to us. Suggestions, complaints, telling us what a wonderful job we're doing, ideas. Everything will be received, and it will be one-on-one, okay? This is a way of the mayor trying to help our staff that is always overworked, overwhelmed with petitions. There's quite a few members of our community that request meetings, and I think that that will make it easier because we is public servants, and we're here, we all have another job, our life and our jobs. But that way, we're gonna structure in a way that if you know those dates, please feel free to call and talk to staff and set an appointment. And I think we will help staff, and we will help our community so they can have a better understanding how we work. So I expect all of you, all of you to help me out and help the staff. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, due to the reception that we have following the council meeting, we're not gonna have item number eleven, which is called to the public. It's canceled. And with now... With that, I move to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty P M. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cruz. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, please say nay. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.